Okay, before we call this meeting to order, I'd like to read a statement by Governor Greg Abbott. On March 13th, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott issued a declaration of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Subsequently, on March 16th, 2020, pursuant to the authority granted in the declaration, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended the application of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, in order to permit telephonic open meetings. This was an effort to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus by avoiding large group meetings while still ensuring continual governmental operations and preserving transparency in the decision-making process. Pursuant to this authority, Tarrant County College District gave notice of its intent to conduct today's Board of Trustees meeting as a telephonic and video conference open meeting. Six trustees will participate in this meeting by video conference or telephonically. Mr. Teresa Ayala, Dr. Diane Patrick, Dr. Michael Evans, Dr. Gwelin Morrison, Mr. Bill Greenhill, and Mr. Kenneth Barr. If a trustee's face is not visible, he or she will state their name before making any comment during the meeting. We will now call the August 20th, 2020 monthly meeting of the TCCD Board of Trustees to order. And I believe we have public comment. Carol?
Yes, sir. Good evening, President Heed, members of the board, Chancellor Giavonini. We have received a communication from ICE out of Tarrant, and they've asked that the following be read to you and into the record. Hello, the Coalition ICE out of Tarrant is once again wishing to express our thoughts as to the importance of the TCC Board of Trustees voting to approve a sanctuary campus resolution. As many of you are aware, undocumented people have been the subject of attacks at the federal and state level throughout this year. With the threatening of the rescinding of DACA, ICE creating new systems of deputizing civilians, USCIS increasing their cost of renewing important legal immigration factors, many members of the undocumented community within TCCD are filled with feelings of uncertainty and, in many instances, distress. Our coalition believes that it is the duty of the TCCD Board of Trustees as community leaders to create and pass a resolution that would create new forms of ensuring the protection of the undocumented community within TCCD, including students, staff, and faculty members who identify as undocumented. The Coalition, as always, is open to begin a meaningful conversation regarding this topic, and it can always be reached by any board member or administrative member at JonathanGadian1216@gmail.com. We hope to hear from you all soon. If not, we look forward to speaking with you all again next month. Thank you, ICE out of Tarrant, Jonathan Gadian. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bracken. Item three of the agenda, Board Business Items and Announcements. Item A, we need to approve the work session minutes of June 11th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, move by Dr. Patrick, I think, and second by Dr. Evans. All in favor, aye?
Mr. Heed, I believe you're muted.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 3B, approval of Board of Trustees meeting minutes for the June 18th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Evans?
Move by.
Dr. Evans, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item four is the consideration approval of the consent agenda. I'm sorry, we gotta go trustee activities. Trustee activities. So let's go down the line. Ms. Teresa Ayala, do you have something you'd like to...
Yes, I just wanted to express my thanks to staff for supporting the community in the Diamond Hill area. It has been hardest hit by the number of confirmed cases of COVID cases in the county. And the college stepped up with supporting an event that was included the distribution of PPE to over 1,000 people. There was hand sanitizer distributed, there were masks. There was information about how to keep you and your family protected. TCC was a huge partner in this, providing some bags and some hand sanitizers. So I want to thank staff for helping to support that, to coordinate that. Dr. Madison and Dr. Ume and Reginald Gates. We can never give him enough thanks for all the work that he does, but I really, really do appreciate it. I think it has made a tremendous impact and, at the same time, has just is in alignment with our goals of serving the community. So thank you very much for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Dr. Patrick?
Aye.
Dr. Evans?
Yes, good evening, everyone. We have spent the last few weeks working with our local school district in MISD, hoping that we could accommodate parents, parents who are teachers and are administrators by providing space for their children who are going to school virtually. And we've hired tutors and proctors and just attempting to fill what we believe is going to be a learning gap for those students. So we've been trying to make something happen in that regard, and we've gotten pretty good response. But these are just some of the things that we've been involved in the past few weeks. And it's just good to try to lend a helping hand. Happy to be working with some people much smarter than I am who made it happen. So there it is, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so happy to be with all of you today. And just let me take a personal moment to share a couple of milestones. I am celebrating my 50th year as a lifelong certified Texas educator this year. And this is the 39th anniversary of the recipient of my Doctor of Philosophy degree from Texas Women's University. So I just wanted to share that with you. And in that same vein, this year, we had an exciting fifth annual breakfast with our elders. It was held remote, of course, virtually, where we celebrated some outstanding people throughout the community. This year, I'm so happy to say that we were able to celebrate our longtime board member and President Louise Appleman. Our speaker was Tanya Vissi, who recently was named as CEO of the Congressional Black Caucus Foundation. And we were excited to have her as our keynote speaker. She is a Fort Worth native, former student, et cetera. We were able to celebrate Ms. Louise Appleman, our longtime board president and member, 30-year member of our board, as well as our current board member, Mr. Kenneth Barr, because he was a youngster when the TCC was being talked about. His father was mayor, so he's been with TCC for a long time. We appreciate you so much, Mr. Mayor. Also, we celebrated Mr. Ken Deveraux, who at one time served as the chairman of our TCC Foundation, along with 13 other community leaders who have, we called wise, accomplished, valued elders. There you see Ms. Shirley Knox-Ben, Commissioner Roy Charles Brooks, Mr. Fernando Costa, Ms. Helen Curtis, a principal here in Stop Six, Ms. Clara Fagner, former mayor of Mansfield, Ms. J.J. Grayson, teacher and realtor, Ms. Harriet Harold, who has dedicated so much to leadership before Madison Hogan III, a former student, Mr. D. Jennings in the first class of TCC on South Campus, Mr. Wayne Spanky Lewis, a basketball phenom, Ms. Joelinda Martinez, Joelinda Hara Martinez. I know you will all recognize that name. He was, her dad was a great friend of TCC, and Mr. and Mrs. John Wright. So we were excited to celebrate them, so many connections with TCC over the years, and still giving TCC great encouragement and connecting us with the community. So happy to share, TCC staff, as always, did a phenomenal job, as they do every day, connecting with the community. We're so happy to be the community's college, and the community is so happy to be a part of TCC. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. That's always a very wonderful event, every year. Thank you for bringing it to us. Mr. Greenhill?
Thank you, Mr. President. You asked me to give a little update on the Community College Association of Texas Trustees. We had our annual business meeting remotely on August 6th. And it was a very interesting meeting, but we, Carol Scott, was elected the new chair for the next two years. The chair-elect is Robert Glacier, who is trustee at Houston Community College. The new secretary is going to be Jay Barrett from Amarillo College. And we also elected, I will be past chair. We have an executive committee, and now I get to relax a little bit as past chair. But newly elected members-at-large were Carla Metzler with North Central College, Bonnie Soraya Nahera from El Paso College. She's had a very difficult time to think about her, she and her family. Both her mother and her father died during the coronavirus epidemic, during this epidemic. And she got sick, but she's okay. But we're gonna really happy to have Bonnie on our board. Ron Walker from Victoria College, Alton Smith from Lone Star College, all been elected as members-at-large of the Board of Directors of CCATT. And Carol Scott from Delmar College, the new chair, is getting the legislative committee. She is really working hard to get that put together. The joint ask is being put together as we speak. And Ms. Diane Patrick, Carol really wants you to, she's trying to reach out to you. I think I got her the, you're right, email address. But this is gonna be a very exciting year and a difficult year because of the, all of the things that are going on. But we're very optimistic. Trustee Heed, I'm ready to, President Heed, we're ready, almost ready to get you together, get us together to have our annual meeting with our delegation. So that's my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Greenhill, and thank you for serving for the last two years as the cat chair. I actually proposed that he extend his presidency for 10 more years, but he did not accept that. So Carol Scott is gonna take over. Mr. Kenneth Barr?
I have no report, Mr. Heed.
Okay. I would like to mention that I was very fortunate to attend the graduation ceremony of six US Army cadets that was held at the Fort Worth Club. We had them attend, and let me give you a little background. These are cadets that came from TCU and Baylor, plus two Rotary Global Grant Scholars seized this opportunity. And they normally would go, the cadets would normally go to Fort Knox for their training during the summer. And that was canceled. TCU had to close campus, and so they could not attend their military science classes and therefore would not qualify for their scholarships to go to TCU next year. The chancellor and Reginald Gates actually made this happen so that we could do this training, this education on our Trinity River campus. It was extremely well done. Everybody enjoyed being on a campus. They got a lot out of it, and they all graduated. And three of the cadets have already received their scholarships, like $120,000 to go to TCU for the next two years and so forth. And this was for these particular students. But this opens up, I think, an opportunity for all of our TCC students, especially early college high school, because it's an opportunity after they complete their 60 hours, get their AA degree, they can then apply, take these courses and then apply for a US Army scholarship. As an example, to go to TCU, which is, that would be roughly $120,000 scholarship, a full-boat scholarship, room and board, and they would get a $425 stipend. So this will be open to all our students from now on. And we actually, we heard a comment that this may change the way the Army actually does their training. So thanks to the chancellor, Reginald Gates, each and every day, he did something to help. Dr. Shawn Madison for providing the campus and all the staff that worked on this. We did do, our AV department took videos of this, and we will have a promo regarding this that we could show our students from now on. So we'll move on to item four, consideration approval of consent agenda. And I would like to mention that the information regarding these items, 4A to 4S, was provided to this board prior to last week's work session. And all of these items were discussed in great detail individually at that meeting. As a result, all of them have been placed on a consent agenda for this meeting for consideration and vote as a single item. But before we proceed to that, two things. One, Susan, you had a comment to make about 4C?
I do. So 4C, you may recall that trustee Ayala had raised a question about the section about capital expenditures that was not proposed for a change. And we agree that she had a good point. I think the language was confusing and not very plain. So the revised attachment that you received with your board packet included some simplification of that language to reflect how you'll receive the capital plan each year.
Okay, thank you. Before we proceed to a vote, with your motion, would any board member like to move to consider one or more consent agenda items individually as an individual action item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Michael Evans, go move.
Dr. Evans?
Kenneth Barr, a second.
And Kenneth Barr is a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move to agenda item 5A. And this is a consideration approval of individual action items. And 5A is a consideration approval of the three-year renewal, actually 37 months, of Cisco security software licenses and support with SHI International for an amount up to $1,087,876.27, which is $360,625.42 annually. Mr. Bob Pacheco?
Yes, TCC uses Cisco anti-malware licensing to protect all TCC-owned physical and virtual devices used in all the different operating systems. All four of the tools underneath this package are essential to security for TCC's devices and networks.
Okay, are there any questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Dr. Morrison approved in the second by?
Greenhill.
Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 5B, consideration approval of contract with McGriff, Seibels, and Williams, Inc., RHSB, and Higginbotham for TCC's 2020 to 2021 insurance renewal in the estimated amount of $1,887,183. Ms. Allenese?
Yes, so this is just the annual renewal of all of the lines of insurance for the upcoming year.
Any questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
So...
A motion by who?
Michael Evans.
Michael, Dr. Evans in a second by Dr. Morrison, I believe.
Yes. Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 5C, consideration and approval of contract with Trevino Group, Inc. to renovate the bookstore at Trinity River Campus in the amount of $365,251.88.
Yes, so this project is reducing the footprint of the bookstore at Trinity River for the purpose of freeing up additional space to allow more accessible student functions along Main Street.
Any questions, discussion? Entertain a motion by?
So moved. Teresa Ayala.
Teresa Ayala, second by Dr. Evans. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 5D, consideration and approval of the contract with Freedom Construction for renovation of the Student Center at Northeast Campus in the amount of $406,934.56.
This is a project to relocate advising and counseling at our Northeast Campus, again, to make those services more accessible to students.
Questions, discussion? I entertain a motion by?
Diane Patrick.
Diane Patrick in a second by Mr. Gabriel Greenhill. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 5E, consideration approval of the contract with Cables Plumbing for sanitary sewer replacement at Northeast Campus. for Sanitary Sewer Replacement at Northeast Campus in the amount of $492,531.33.
This is the ongoing infrastructure improvements that we're making across the college. And in this instance, it's a 52-year-old sewer main.
Questions, discussion? We'll entertain a motion by?
So moved, Teresa Ayala.
Second, Michael Evans.
Dr. Evans, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 5F, Consideration Approval of Contracts with Multiple Vendors for the LED Lighting Upgrade Project at South Campus in the amount of $1,345,339.60.
Yes, as part of the 2019 bond program, we're doing lighting upgrades across the college. And this continues that process. And the board was, provided information on the resulting energy savings as a result of questions that were raised last week.
Any questions, discussion? Entertain a motion by?
Diane Patrick.
Diane Patrick, a second by Dr. Evans.
Yes, sir, second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 5G, Consideration Approval of Contracts with Multiple Vendors for the Emergency Power Upgrades at South Campus in the amount of $628,996.96.
This is also part of the 2019 bond program to upgrade mechanical, electrical, and plumbing infrastructure across the district.
Questions, discussion?
Move approval.
Motion.
Wayne Morrison.
Morrison, a second by?
Teresa Ayala, second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 5H, Consideration Approval of Contract with Chambers Engineering, LLC, for Building Envelope Modifications and Improvements on South Campus in the amount of $175,302.7.
So there are some deficiencies that have been identified in the building envelope that are creating some energy inefficiencies, and this is intended to correct those problems at South Campus.
Questions, discussion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Greenhill, second by?
Michael Evans.
Dr. Evans, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 5I, Consideration Approval of the Contract with Freedom Construction for the Renovation of Health Sciences Building at South Campus in the amount of $496,979.
So this is an aging space that's in need of renovation, and it's also an opportunity for us to co-locate our deans from multiple locations together and begin implementing the philosophy of the workspace environments principle.
Questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Go move, Michael Evans.
By Dr. Evans, and a second.
Second, Teresa Ayala.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item J, Consideration and Approval of Contract with GFC Construction for the Welding Technology Lab Expansion at the Hermacy Johnson Hadley Center of Excellence in the amount of $2968,335.2.
So back in 2018, the board made the decision to begin extending, expanding the welding program to meet market demands, and this is a continuation of those physical improvements needed to support that program.
Questions, discussion?
This is Teresa. I know that we discussed this in detail at our work session, but I'm sorry, did you, could you clarify how many students we would be able to accommodate?
Dr. LeBlanc, I believe, is with us and is able to answer that question.
Thank you.
Yes, so we have a welding program on south, and I gave you those numbers last.
Right.
And for northwest, the first semester, we anticipate 80 students. The second, 120. The third, 160, and the fourth, 260. And this will work in concert with the aviation, the AP Mechanics piece.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah. My pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc, I appreciate that.
We'll entertain a motion by Ms. Ayala.
Yes, so moved.
And a second, aye?
Diane Patrick.
Diane Patrick, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 5K, Consideration Approval of Contracts with Multiple Vendors for the Renovation of the Third Floor at the Hermacy Johnson Hadley Center of Excellence of Northwest Campus, Northwest Campus in the amount of $431,483.
So we, we shared with you that there's a larger project associated with renovating the space to accommodate corporate solutions and the services it will provide. This is, this particular board action item covers an expansion of the design agreement to include the exterior stair that's needed to meet fire code. In addition, it prepares for the audiovisual equipment and installation that's going to be necessary. You'll receive, or you'll be presented a, the full construction contract at the September board meeting.
Questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion by?
So moved, Dr. Morrison.
Dr. Morrison, second by?
The Greenhill.
The Greenhill, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. I want to consider Items 5L and 5N together, and I'll read them first. We have a motion. Item L is Consideration Approval of Contracts with Multiple Vendors for Redevelopment Design Services and Construction at the Northwest Campus in the amount of $22,935,788. And Item N is Consideration Approval of Contract with Perkins and Will to Provide Redevelopment and Design Services for Southeast Campus in the amount of $2621,940. And I'd like to entertain a motion to postpone consideration of both these items, 5L and 5N, until September 17, 2020 meeting of this board in order to give staff time to research various potential construction techniques and present additional information about them to this board.
So moved. Second, Diane Patrick.
A motion by Ms. Ayala and?
I think it was Dr. Morrison.
Morrison. Dr. Morrison, okay.
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion to postpone carries. Item 5M, Consideration and Approval of Contracts with Multiple Vendors for the Emergency Power Upgrades at Southeast Campus in the amount of $679,165.68.
Again, continuation of the 2019 bond program and infrastructure improvements across the district.
Questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion by?
Michael Evans.
Dr. Evans, second by Mr. Barr, I believe. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 5O, excuse me, Consideration and Approval of Contract with Freedom Construction for District-Wide Electronic Access Control Repairs in the amount of $253,134.94.
So we recently procured a software product for our building access system for certain portions of our facilities. And in that process, we've been evaluating the hardware needs as well as the, the, excuse me, the control circuits and modifications necessary to accommodate that. So this, this is that preparation work.
Okay, questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion by?
So moved, Diane Patrick.
Diane Patrick, and a second by?
Greenhill, second.
Dr. Morrison. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 5P, authorize the transfer of $12,656,941 from Operations and Maintenance Fund 10 to Debt Service Fund 50. And that would include $2982,189 and Cash Funded Capital Fund 40, $9,674,752, for the purpose of supporting the five-year capital plan. Ms. Allenese.
Yeah, so you may recall that in the current year budget plan, we had set aside $12.6 million for future capital, and that was in preparation for the upcoming bond program and knowing that we would be establishing a debt service fund and so on. So at this point, our recommendation is to transfer just under $3 million to Fund 50 that we've established to service our debt that was just issued to coincide with our reserve policy of having two months' payments on hand. In addition, the remainder of that, we are recommending be transferred to Fund 40 to continue our, our cash-funded capital initiatives consistent with the five-year plan that you reviewed last week.
Questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion by?
Greenhill.
Dr. Mr. Barr, and a second by Dr. Mr. Greenhill, okay? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 5Q, Consideration and Approval Resolution Approving the Operating Budgets and the Capital Budgets of the TCCD for the fiscal year beginning September 1, 2020.
So the Chancellor provided an overview of the budget in the work session last week, and this resolution is consistent with appropriations for each of the funds that were described. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
By Dr. Evans, I believe, first, and then Dr. Morrison, second.
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item R, has that been pulled?
No, sir, it's, there's actually a substitution that was provided in your packet that I'll describe to you in just a moment.
Okay, Consideration Approval of a Resolution Establishing the Proposed 2020 Advilorian Tax Rate of 0.13017 per $100 in valuation, divided as .12147 cents for operation and maintenance and 0.0087 cents for interest and sinking.
Yeah, yeah, so we talked about the tax levy last week, and since that time, we had been advised of some changes in the process that were created by state statute this year that requires us to do this as a two-step process now. So essentially, this evening, you will be approving what is, what they're calling a proposed tax rate. And we will publish a notice to the public that indicates the votes of each member of the board on the proposed tax rate, and then we will come back to you to actually levy that tax at a public hearing in September. Our deadline to approve the, the tax rate is the end of September, and so your normal meeting in September is sufficient to do that.
Okay, but we should consider this this evening, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Remove approval.
Thank you. By Mr. Barr, and a second by Mr. Greenhill.
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
I'll approve the tax, yeah, sure. I don't want it to be Ayala. Look at those you.
All in favor, introduce a few.
Aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay, Item 6, Military Financial Report, Ms. Allenese.
Yeah, so we have just closed out the 11th month of our fiscal year, and we are at 98.2% of our income projections. And probably a little bit more will trickle in, in the coming month. As far as expenses go, we are at 78.6, excuse me, 72 point, this is June, I'm sorry, slide down to July, I apologize. Oh, I guess we have June and July, since we didn't meet in July. And we are at 78.6% expended for the year. And I will tell you, this is the time of year when a lot of our capital spending starts to have the invoices come in, so I don't expect this to end that low, but we will obviously have some savings due to our remote operations of the college. Be happy to answer any questions. We also have the investment report. The June and July are both displayed. And again, as normal, our pools are decreasing at this time of year when we have expenditures that are exceeding receipts. That's just a normal thing that happens during the summer, towards the end of the fiscal year. Our yield at this point is 1.2, and then our weighted average maturity is at 353 days, consistent with our policy. Be happy to answer.
Remind everybody that we're under PFIA, which tightly restricts what we invest our funds in. Inflation rate right now is 1.56, so by PFIA, PFIA, we're actually losing purchasing power, but we have no control over that. Thank you, Ms. Allenese, if you're through. And we will go to Item 7, Chancellor's Report, Dr. Eugene Giovinini.
Thank you, Mr. Heed. It's my pleasure to have the opportunity for two new staff member introductions. And our first will be conducted by Dr. Eris Palmore. Dr. Eris.
Yes, sir, good evening, President Heed, Chancellor Giovinini, and members of the board. It is truly my pleasure to introduce Dr. Retu Raju, who is the new Vice President for Academic Affairs for Tarrant County College's Northeast Campus. Dr. Raju previously served as Dean for Advanced Manufacturing for Houston Community College. Under her leadership, the Federal Department of Labor designated HCC as a Registered Apprenticeship Center with the ability to offer apprenticeships directly to area industries. As Dean, Dr. Raju supported 60 faculty members and has herself written grant proposals totaling $5 million. She brings experience in leading for accreditation reaffirmations and work with 50 industry partners, three economic development agencies, and various chambers of commerce to bear upon the VPAA role. Dr. Raju's education includes a PhD in Technical Communication and Rhetoric from Texas Tech University, a master's in English from Sam Houston State University, and a bachelor's degree from the University of Houston Downtown. Her professional affiliations include active engagement with the American Council on Education, where she serves as a member of ACE Engage and on the Council of Fellows Professional Development Committee. An avid reader, she writes poetry and continues to train in Indian classical music. Dr. Raju joined Tarrant County College on August 1. Please join me in welcoming her. Dr. Raju?
Welcome, Dr. Raju.
Welcome. You can just turn your camera on there. Okay, very good. She is going to be right with us. We are managing in a new space, Dr. Raju.
Good evening, President Heed, Chancellor Giovinini, and members of the board. It is my honor to address the board and offer my sincere thanks for the opportunity to serve as Vice President of Academic Affairs at Northeast College under the dynamic leadership of Dr. Kenya Ayers-Palmore. My heartfelt appreciation to Tarrant County College for a smooth, seamless interview and hiring process that brought me here in spite of a little virus. The last three weeks have been exciting as I'm getting to know an incredibly talented team of colleagues, both in academic affairs and at the Northeast Campus, and being able to collaborate with a great leadership team across the college. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve TCC during this vital period of strengthening our institution and our communities as we recover from the COVID-19 crisis. Using our framework of the three goals and the eight principles, I am confident that we will build a stronger TCC for all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Raju, welcome, and we look forward to seeing you in person.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome, Dr. Raju. I'd also ask Mr. Pacheco for an introduction, this new staff member. this new staff member.
Thank you, President Heed, Chancellor Giovinini, and members of the board. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Chris Helge as the new Director of Knowledge and Resource Management at TCC Northeast. Previously, Dr. Helge was an Assistant Dean for Academic Engagement at Texas Women's University. While serving at Texas Women's University, Dr. Helge directed four departments with 55 employees. He created and led a knowledge management scholarly communications department for Texas Women's University that saved students over $800,000 annually via open educational resources. He offered legal guidance via intellectual property and contract law. He led to the Collection Management Resources Services Department and directed off-site campuses, libraries in Houston and in Dallas. Dr. Helge additionally directed the process of discovery, collection, organization, preservation, and dissemination of vital university data, information, and knowledge. Dr. Helge also formerly served as an attorney focusing on intellectual property, probate, and contract law. Dr. Helge received a doctorate in Information Science from the University of North Texas, a doctorate in jurisprudence from South Texas College of Law, Houston, a master of library services from the University of North Texas, and a bachelor's arts from Baylor University. Dr. Helge joined Tarrant County College at the Northeast Campus on July 20th.
Welcome, Dr. Helge.
Thank you, President Heed, Chancellor Giovinini, and the members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to serve at Tarrant County College. I'd also like to thank Chief Technology Officer Pacheco for allowing me to work with him and serve on his team. For the past few weeks, I've been able to meet with and discover some of the job tasks of his team and get to know them better and understand how they serve, provide excellent service to students. I've also had the opportunity to meet with my staff and learn about their job task and learn how they are providing excellent service to students and to the college. I look forward to collaborating with and working with both teams and also collaborating with and working with the various departments across the college and to the community itself. Thank you again for this opportunity to provide excellent service to students and to the college. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Helge, and welcome to TCC. And, and we look forward to seeing you in person as well.
Welcome, Dr. Helge. Members of the board, this week is our Connections Week, which is traditionally kicks off our fall semester with a number of activities specifically that highlight, celebrate the acknowledgement of employees as well as the college as a whole. Somewhat of a bittersweet week in that we're not able to do any of this in person. However, we have done a great deal of the same activities remotely and, from what I understand, well-received throughout the campuses. So within that light, I would like to acknowledge as we do kick off this fall semester the resilience, the perseverance, and the continued commitment of our faculty and staff to the purpose and the mission of TCC. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Heed.
Does that conclude your remarks, Chancellor?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. There will be no closed session tonight. Our next work session meeting will be held on September 10th, 2020. And our next board meeting will be held on September 17th, 2020. I'll now entertain a motion to, to close.
So moved, Michael Evans.
Dr. Evans, second by?
Diane Patrick.
Diane Patrick, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries.